Oh, hi. Hello. We have a Arts and Recreation Committee meeting this evening, which is including transportation, which is a little different, but that's the way it's on the agenda, and so that's what we will do. The first issue, and I just wanted to have these things run past the committee before we went into the official meeting. The first one will be presented as 0307, and it has to do with Halloween, and it includes the possibility of offense. And I say "possibility" because this was what we discussed when I met with Andy Stone and Tom Pyle, and I've also met with Ray Hazlett and Gary Hunter concerning this. And we wanted to leave some flexibility. So if the powers that be, the administrative entities, begin working on this and find it not feasible, that they can come back and say, "We're not going to do it." So the ordinance includes the language in the "whereas," as may include the use of fencing to create a defined event area to protect health, safety, along with the admissions system to offset cost. So that was the way it was written, with much discussion with the people that have to actually implement all of this. And what they said is that immediately on passage of this ordinance, if it passes, that they will form a task force, that they will travel to Madison, that they'll take a look at details of implementation, and put together a cost, and send to us a budget for the whole plan. But they were only guessing beyond that. Jim, do you have a comment?
I'm just wondering, upon passage, they'll begin working on it. Should we think about maybe passing it on second reading or something?
We could do that.
So that they would have...
If there's not objection on council, it certainly would give them a two-weeks earlier start, although they're organizing now to...
For mid-February?
Right.
Okay. Well, that's fine.
And they said that they would just hit the deck running if it passes, but that they... And of course, they'll be paying attention to what we say, too, and I think they'll get a general feeling for whether we're on board with the concept or not before the actual third reading. That's usually the way things go. Paul?
Normally, I vote against these things, but if we can recoup costs by fences, I'm all for it.
Right.
I had a conversation with Jonathan Holmberg. He said he talked to you sometime with all sorts of revenue-enhancing ways of doing things, as well as with the Tourism Bureau. I guess they're working together somewhat.
Right. And I did speak with Bajinka this afternoon, and she is ill this evening, but she had talked previously about having a student project concerning cost recovery. Well, she now is of the thought that she's going to have two separate class projects. One, a more theoretical, what are the possible ways Halloween might be able to recoup expenses? And the other one, a more concrete, if we follow through on this and try the fencing and the plan for this year, specifically sort of a public relations project to get the students involved in the process and get them on board and in a positive frame of mind. And so I thought that was good, that she is interested in approaching it on both of those levels.
Yeah, okay.
Debbie?
Two things. One, I think that the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee mainly organizes the stages and the entertainment. And it seemed like Madison dealt with that by designating an entity...
Correct.
...that could organize an activity within the fenced area.
Right.
And it was really clear that that's what it was. So I think if we go down that road, we should make sure that people know, you know, that the city is dealing with the costs around safety and...
Exactly.
...porta potties and all of those expenses of dealing with the event as a whole, and that fundraising for those two different things are actually separate.
Right. And there are a couple of responses to that, that the Clean and Safe or any other group that might want to do some kind of fundraising thing. Ray Hazlett and I had that discussion and kind of agreed that if these things pass, then we move forward to write another ordinance that says that we will accept groups collaboratively, and that they, for example, we could have service groups at entrance gates, and that they would receive some pay in that. The other ordinance would include what Tom Pyle was referring to in terms of presenting us with a budget, and at that point, it would designate any revenue that comes in, pays number one for the additional expenses that have been incurred, and two for safety. And very clearly that those are the only things this money would go toward.
And I think I've been pretty clear in all of this discussion that I have concerns about the idea of fencing. I think it could heighten the tension that exists at some periods during Halloween traditionally. And do you view this as something exploratory, and then the budget is the up-or-down vote on the fencing? Or do you... The city personnel who are working on this viewing this as, "Yes, we're going ahead"?
They view it as, "Yes, we're going ahead," but that there is an escape clause, that if things just... It just becomes too huge, that there would be a way to back out of it. The other part of the answer to that is that when we actually sat down, and Tom Pyle and Andy Stone and I sat down in one meeting and just brainstormed, that we came to the conclusion that the differences in a Halloween by this description were incremental. It would not be as huge as it initially seemed. The biggest difference would be the charging admission. And part of that discussion came on the next ordinance, the 04 ordinance, and having to do with the glass-free zone. Well, already, you can't walk around with an open container. So that, you know, a lot of that is already in there. And so that's what they were saying, that they didn't see it as going to be huge. And one part of that discussion was not to fence off a huge area, or rather, fence off just the Court Street area and see how that works.
I just wanted to say one thing. I ran into a friend from school not too long ago, and he lives on Court Street, and he just wanted to express a complaint that he had about, he did not like that he would have to... His guests would have to pay to come and stay. I don't know if they're... It's feasible to work in there, that people who live on Court Street would not only be exempt from paying, but also maybe a guest or two would be exempt from paying?
I would assume that would be negotiable, that we could say a guest or two, but you can't just say...
I understand. I understand. Because the concept is two people who...
Seven thousand guests for the people that live on Court Street.
So maybe that's something that could certainly be support. Also, I know that we've been working very closely with students, and I think it's important that we continue to communicate with them. So I'm going to invite them to come to council next week, so they can hopefully give us a general overview of how they feel about the fencing, or what they've been hearing from the student lobby.
Right. And certainly, other student groups as well. That's something that we're very interested in having all along the way, the student input. The other ordinance, 0407, concerns the glass-free zone. It's a separate ordinance because there's a penalty, and so that's why it is written up as a separate ordinance. Under Section 2, it says, "The penalty for violation for this prohibition is a fine of up to $50 for each violation." And it's written again, so it just specifically addresses glass-drinking containers, so you don't get into people's glasses, you know, other things that might become involved in... So that was why Gary Hunter put in that language.
And the idea behind that glass-free zone, just in that limited area, is... Why? Because...
Because broken glass has been a major safety problem, year after year after year. Ideally, this could be expanded to a wider area, but again, we're back to the discussion of, "Let's take incremental steps, and if the glass-free zone works within that designated map, that perhaps in future years, we would expand that." Could be citywide, but that is something that I spoke to Mark Bising several years ago about, and he felt that citywide was too difficult because of the number of things that don't come in plastic bottles.
So as you enter the fenced-off area, you surrender in plastic?
Yes. And another suggestion that Gary Hunter had is that, for example, if someone was carrying a glass bottle of pop, instead of having them throw it away, have plastic cups there for them, and have them pour it into a plastic cup and go on in. Amy?
I know we discussed this before, that one of the concerns I had was being able to purchase glass bottles from BP and/or the bars. I know you are allowed to purchase alcohol, you know, at the end of the night or whatever. So I'm wondering if this... How this is affecting it, or if it is...
The answer to that, at this point, the best I know, is that the bars that they could use glass containers inside, and they aren't supposed to allow people to walk out of the front door with beer if they want to deal with carryout service at back doors. That's something that we've talked about before and could be addressed. But there wouldn't be any restriction on them using glass containers in their own establishment. It's been written very specifically to allow for that. And in our discussion with Andy Stone and Tom Pyle, the BP would be outside of the fence.
What about Union Street Market? Which is?
On Union Street. Could be outside of Union Street. But those are details that we won't use as we go through.
CVS, I think, is inside.
Yeah?
It would be. That is correct. And again, we talked about, you know, so if you buy something that has glass in it and keep it closed and wrapped up, and walk through the area and leave, then there isn't going to be a problem. If you break open your beers on Court Street, you've got a problem, and it's for open container and for the glass container.
Oh, so carrying glass bottles, like in, you know, six-pack of glass bottles?
If it were wrapped up, you know? They'd have to do something in terms of packaging, so it wouldn't be... And where are you going with it? If you've paid to go in the party, you know, are you just coming into CVS and buying something and going back out of the party?
Or going to somewhere on Court Street, just walking up and down Court Street? You know, if you live on the north end, the south end, or vice versa.
Well, those are the kinds of details that we need to work with. Debbie?
Well, it seems like the way it's written, that wouldn't be okay, what you just said. I mean, if they have it...
What I'm saying is, who would know?
Right.
That's exactly what I'm saying. If you have it well-wrapped and are carrying it that way, and go directly to someplace, either outside the fence or go to an apartment, no one's going to stop you. No one's going to stop you unless they see glass. So that's part of the situation. Other questions or comments? Okay, so we can move on to the transportation part of Arts and Recreation. This is on here because last... Two weeks ago, just before Christmas, I had a phone call from Melissa, Melissa Knight, and she said that she had had a phone call from ODOT saying that there was an important meeting in Columbus that we really needed to attend, and the next day. And so we kind of pulled it together and went to Columbus and attended a three-hour seminar, and the gist of it was that in '07, that no entity can apply for funding for vehicles. The city could, but the special groups, like the seniors group, the nursing homes, the... Any of those agencies that have transportation vehicles could not apply for those, for funding for those, unless the county has a county-wide transit plan. So what this meeting concerned was that any county could apply for a grant if their application was in by January 8th, that is, this Friday. And they could designate another group to put that grant through. So Melissa and I met with the county commissioners the next day, and they signed a resolution saying that they would like for the city to follow through on that grant, because they felt that with the Transportation Task Force and with Melissa doing grants on a regular basis, that that was the most expedient way to make the January 8th date. So they had... They are just passing it through to us so that that can get done. The grant is practically together, and so that's why it's on the agenda, and it has to be suspended, and...
Oh, so it says the 12th on this? Is it 12th or 8th?
Is it the 12th? It's the 12th if it says the 12th.
Yeah, okay. But quickly.
I knew it was soon. I think it was the 8th. They said that they were going to... Yeah, this is... They were going to send out additional information on the 8th, but it was due the 12th. And we were like, "Well, okay." But we didn't need the additional information, and so it's pretty much together. So it's due next week.
Okay.
Debbie?
The Disabilities Commission talked about this at their last meeting, and they're very interested in having a person or two involved in the planning.
Okay.
To make sure various disabilities are taken into consideration in transportation planning?
In order to do this without putting it out for bids, the way that it's being done is through an established entity rather than an individual. And so they will be seeking people to take part in that. And yes, there was a... There was not a county commissioner at that meeting, but Scott Dennis was at the meeting, and so he was very much aware of what was going on. He called the commissioners immediately when he got home and said, "Something needs to happen fast." And so it all was very fast, but this is the result. Any other comments or questions? Any miscellaneous for Arts and Recreation? If not, the meeting's adjourned, and in 10 minutes, we'll meet for City Council.
Wesley? Come up here and let me show you something.
November 20th, December 4th, and December 11th.
Second.
Motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor of accepting of the minutes?
Aye.
Those opposed, the minutes of those sessions have been accepted. Under Communications, the... I've got one quick announcement. January 15th is the next regular session of council, since that is on Martin Luther King Day. City Council will meet on the 16th, Tuesday, the 16th, instead. Are there any other communications? Paul?
I see that we have a request for public hearings for the PECO concerning AP practices, and I think it's actually a utility rate increase, if I'm reading correctly.
Yep.
They're going to have one in Athens. This will be January 25th, Thursday, at 6:00 PM, at Ohio University's... Baker University Center, room 242. This is concerning any things you have in terms of services, tree trimming, and other incidentals, I suspect, just so people are aware of it.
Any other communications? Members Sam?
I just wanted to add to what Member Wilde said, that there are some requirements toward testifying in order to make your testimony a part of the record. You can go and speak, but if you're not sworn, it doesn't stay... It doesn't keep. So if you need any information, if anybody's thinking you're going, which we hope several people are...
We can make copy of the...
Yeah, we will have all this stuff in the council office. Thank you.
Are there any other communications? Reports and communications from other elected officials?
No report other than the request for executive session.
Council will have an executive session that is on its agenda later. Kathy?
I guess the only thing I could report is that our income tax receipts are up exactly 2% compared to last year, which is about $170,000.
Questions? You? Under ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 14806, an ordinance authorizing a development agreement with Edwards Athens Student Housing One LLC. Comments?
I think that the developers here, if anyone has questions, or if there's new information.
Hello again. I'm Rick Kirk. Happy to be here today, everyone. Happy to answer any questions, have more and more information if you have any questions.
I was wandering through the code office, the 29th. I guess they said they had a new upgraded version of this thing? Is that much different, or what's the deal?
Yes. It's more than that thing. It is the final development plan. We're proceeding to the final development plan for Planning Commission.
Okay, so that's...
So we made the submission, which is just more information as part of that submission.
Okay.
More the same, yes.
So that's what that is? Okay. Just wondered if there had been any substantial changes?
No.
Other members of council, Mr. Kirk? Member Sam?
I had one smaller question. There's quite a section in the development agreement that talks about the water line, and I think at some point, it says, "Hooking into the city's existing 10-inch water line at Kimes Road." Is that the size line you're going to run from that point to wherever?
No. I believe the extension is a 12-inch line.
Okay, that's what I thought, too.
The existing is 10. So we'd oversize it, or upgrade, "upsize" it, I guess the word is.
And then with regards to that water line, the development agreement still talks about it will be paid back by the tax incremental financing to the extent that TIF funds are available. And I know we talked about this before. The mayor said that the TIF agreement, which would be developed at a later point, would spell out how that reimbursement would take effect.
Yes.
Would happen. I just want to ask one more time. It says, "As TIF funds are available," so would the repayment for the water line, would that be the very first thing that those money... Those funds are expended on, and then once that's done, we have it to do other stuff? Or is that... Would it be...
Do you have a...
Okay, so that is to be determined in a separate agreement?
Right, there's a separate TIF agreement that the school system, that the city council would have.
So we would have... We could input at that time. That's fine.
Other comments or questions? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak with Mr. Kirk? Christine, please.
I have a joint comment. Is that all right?
Yes. Yep. Up to three minutes.
I won't take that one.
We appreciate it.
Chris Neisley, 15-year-old coach rode. I did have a chance to look at the earlier version of the draft development agreement, and in this, I believe it does mention or make mention of an 882-bed unit that would be constructed. And if the approval of that draft development contains that same information, and if that implies approval of the plan, I'd voice my personal objection to this. Because at this point, having followed all the other plans for that hillside, and knowing how City Council has voiced its concerns in the past, and how community and neighborhood associations have voiced their concern in the past for the size that that hillside can accommodate, I don't think an 882-bed unit would allow for preserving the shape and contour of the hillside, and so I believe it would violate city code. Thank you.
Are there other comments? Under ordinances for first reading, ordinance 0107, an ordinance adopting the comprehensive plan for the city of Athens, and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith. Member Bain?
Mr. President, 010107 moves forward the work that we started last time, some of us, anyway. And there have been quite a few emails, and I would propose, actually, I proposed to have one next Monday, but not being a jock at heart, I didn't realize that it was an important day for some people, so we're going to go for the 23rd and have, before final reading, have a discussion of exactly what's going on rather than doing it now, if that's possible, given the rest of the agenda. The one thing that is very important to me is that we have, in this ordinance, not added it as Title 41 to our code. The "whereas's" are the same. And should... As long as we're not adding it to the code, should the rest of council wish to do it a slightly different way, I'd be amenable to that on, I think it is the 23rd.
22nd.
22nd.
On Monday?
Yeah, Monday. Okay. So, yeah, I was doing seven days from the 16th. Okay, there we are. So that would be a time where we'll invite all interested parties to come forward and talk about it at that point in time.
Other comments? Carol?
I just have a legal or a technical question. By adopting this ordinance, the way that it's written, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, would it repeal the ordinance that's tabled?
It would. Long direction.
It wouldn't repeal the ordinance that's tabled, because the ordinance that's tabled hasn't been adopted at this point in time.
Okay, so it would just sit there?
It would just sit there.
Yeah, and I would note for the record that the other ordinance did have that particular plan being added to the code as well. So, I mean, it was adding it to... It was identical, except in its action, which I found... Which is the reason why things started to move, for me, anyway. Onto the 23rd, maybe?
Other comments? Ordinance 0207, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to fund a county transportation plan and declaring emergency. Member Patterson?
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules on 0207.
Second.
Mr. President, the reason for the suspension of the rules is a January 12th deadline for the grant application.
Other comments? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules are suspended on ordinance 02.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 0207.
Second.
Mr. President, this ordinance is just for the mayor to submit an application to enter into a grant agreement with ODOT for a county comprehensive transportation plan.
Mr. President, this ordinance is just for the mayor to submit an application to enter into a grant agreement with ODOT for a county comprehensive transportation plan. The grant would grant up to $30,000 for the county of Athens, and this has been, the county commissioners have put together a resolution designating Athens City as the enactor of this grant.
I didn't quite understa...
Sorry.
I'm sorry. She's...
I know.
Okay. I didn't quite understand in our previous discussion, is this grant application to develop a plan?
Yes.
Okay, and then funding to operate that plan?
May or may not be forthcoming. This is a federal monies designated through the state to the county, which isn't going to be the city. So it's rather convoluted, but there is no guarantee that they will have implementation monies later, but...
But there will be a plan.
What we do know is that if we don't have a plan, that the county would be excluded from some funding.
Okay, thank you.
Member Wild?
You can ask if there's a match. Is there a match necessary? You know?
There is no match whatsoever.
For the planning part, okay. And if I understand correctly, it's really to try coordinating all the different services there within the county in terms of bus transportation?
That is correct, and there's been discussion sort of out there for a long time about this.
But now we're forced to.
Right, exactly. It's what's referred to as safety loo monies, and they've been saying that they're going to insist on coordination instead of every little entity having their own transit, and this is more or less mandating it, yes. If you don't have a plan, you don't get any transit vehicles through those entities.
And this would actually include any city entities as well, really? Not the city system, but...
Not the city system, but yes, you're correct. Small agencies within the city, that it would include them or exclude them, depending how you look at it.
Okay.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 0207?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 0307, an ordinance closing that portion of Court Street from President to Carpenter on October 27th and 28th, '07, in anticipation of a large number of people convention on downtown Athens, Halloween weekend. Member Patterson?
Mr. President, as promised, we are looking at the Halloween ordinances, starting the first meeting of the year, so that implementation could begin in the very near future. This 0307 ordinance is our usual form for closing the streets, and the map would be essentially the same as it's been in the past, but including the second whereas, it says whereas plans for the 2007 Halloween event may include the use of fencing to create a defined area to protect the public health and safety, along with an admission system to offset costs. And then under Section 1, the final listing there is fence the perimeter of the closed area and charge admission.
Further discussion? Ordinance 0407, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking containers on Court Street between Union and State Streets on October 27th and 28th, '07, in anticipation of a large number of people, convention on downtown Athens again Halloween weekend. Member Patterson?
Mr. President, 0407 is a new concept, and that is to establish the designated map area as a glass-free zone to eliminate some of the problems that we've had with broken glass injuries in the past. And it is written to indicate that it's, it's glass bottles primarily that are being addressed here, and that it does not exclude glass containers being used inside establishments. It's the streets, it's the sidewalk, it's city property that it's banned from.
Other comments? Member Phillips?
I dug out the stuff that you gave us from Madison to take a look at that after the committee meeting, and it looks like they've got a fairly large area as the glass-free zone. And I'm concerned if we're going to go ahead with this, with the glass-free zone being smaller even than the fenced area, because it seems to me that a lot of the problems we've had with bottles being thrown have been down around Mill and Palmer, and I would think it would be confusing for people about whether they're allowed to have glass and not have glass if it's not even the entire area that you're proposing to fence.
Actually, it is the area that is fenced.
Well, the fencing ordinance extends to Carpenter, and the glass-free zone in the ordinance extends to State. Or at least the part of the street you're closing extends to Carpenter. I don't know where you're proposing the fence then.
Last year, the end of Carp, or the end of Court Street was not closed. It ended at, on State Street. It did not go to Carpenter.
So then is the previous ordinance not aligned with what we're talking about?
I would say that's probably correct, and what I will do is we'll take a look at that, and at the next meeting amend it if we need to, to get that.
Yep, the previous ordinance is just a request, Debbie, the administration, it's actually up to the administration what they do, and it deals with, you know, it deals with banning parking and other things.
The parking, yes, would be banned, but, and also, Gary and I did talk today about this, and he says that we can, the, the street committee or the street department can't close a street without our authorization, but because we authorize their, they do not have to close any particular place. Is that the correct interpretation?
Right, it's just a request of the administration. Whereas the other, the ordinance here is very specific.
And the intention, right.
And it may not include the area.
The intention is that the fenced-in area would be the glass-free zone, and the reason for not extending it to other areas at this point is to take little steps, you know, try this, see how it works. And then if, in the future, we might want a broader glass-free map, that's something that could be considered.
Other comments? Announcements and other business? Member Bain?
I already asked for a meeting of the committee as a whole on the 23rd, 22nd, pardon me, but I also wanted to note that last time I got pretty addled and I forgot to say that I did write a letter from myself and hopefully from the rest of you, asking the commissioners to organize household hazardous waste pickup this year, keeping, because the solid waste district is the one with the pockets that could fund it. I also talked to people out in the area so that we can get moving on it, which means it may take a little longer, but I just wanted you to know that. I meant to bring it up and make sure everyone wanted to go along with it, but I did it just as a person who knew the plan, so.
Other announcements? Member Phillips?
I'd like a planning and development committee next week to talk about...
We weren't in... 22nd.
Okay.
Everybody seems to want to go and watch some football or something.
Okay.
Is it basketball?
I don't know. I'd like to have a planning and development committee meeting to talk about map modernization and flood plain intern to help us get ready for that. Sounds great to me.
Other comments?
I just wanted to comment on Nancy's comment, and this is something that the Wellhead Protection Committee has urged for some time, that we organize hazardous waste, so I appreciate the move for a way to do that and hope that we can enact it.
Member Flowers?
Transportation Committee meeting to discuss Stewart Street sidewalk update, and also, we did the 24-hour parking... Yeah, we did the 24-hour parking ban, so we want to get feedback from anybody on that, so if you could please either get in touch with council or come to the meeting on the 22nd and discuss, to see if it worked, didn't work, and what we should do. That's it.
Mayor Abel?
Just to remind you, the third one of these, one day in city offices.
We're going to meet on the 16th. 16th.
The other items aren't what it's recorded on, where it'd be that we've taken up the brick on Jefferson Hill and put additional soil in, done some seeding, put matting down and straw and such. It's a safety issue that the bricks were just way too uneven, so we did pull all those up. And, see, the bus system operation has been switched as of today. I met with the system manager. The main increasing cost really in my mind is the fact that we do have a full-time system manager under this proposal, at least until we would mutually agree that it's no longer necessary. But that's one of the things that we feel that very strongly that we've been lacking is somebody to really run the system on a full-time basis rather than part of my staff spending a few hours here and there doing it, along with a coordinator that also drives a bus and everything else. So we're looking forward to some improvements to service and a lot of public comment and assistance and some redesign of the bus system.
Member Wild?
About Jeff Hill, the bricks, I assume, we're going to use elsewhere, is that the case?
Yes. They're a unique brick in their respect that they have a beveled edge on them.
For hillsides, apparently.
Well, which originally was so the horses could pull the hill easier, but...
And that was a closed, that street was closed under emergency conditions, if I remember correctly?
Yes, there was.
Because we never did an ordinance for that?
There was a water line break on it, which rendered it, to the point that it was probably in the tune of $250,000 to repair it back to its normal, so we tried for a while just to see, you know, how much use it had, what, because both the police and the fire chief said that it was of no problem to them, that it would be closed. And it's worked out rather well, we haven't had any real problems with it. The only real problem that you have is, it's one way up into about where the entrance into the East Green is, and so people, in essence, use the private drive and parking lot of McCracken Hall to turn around.
Do we have an updated cost analysis on that in terms of engineering? Because that's, what, three years old now?
That's three years. I don't have an updated one.
Is that something Andy's capable of doing? Because I know we're talking about doing some side work now, let's do it.
He could, I mean, it was just fitting in with everything else.
I know. He's probably can't check.
Other comments for the mayor? Other announcements? Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? The next item on our agenda is an executive session, that we will be going into executive session to discuss the pending litigation and some personnel matters. We do have a couple of attorneys that will be joining us. So I would ask also that with the usual members of council, the mayor, the auditor, the law director, Lisa Eliasen join, and Mitch Banschowski should also join this closed session of council.
Okay, so we move into executive session, pending litigation, personnel matters.
Number Wild?
Aye.
Bain?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
We will take about 10 minutes to close down the cameras, and for any questions that the press may have of council, the only other...